Yeah, I meet a lot of good people, so I'm sure, I'm sure something will come up. Okay, okay. I see it, I see it.
Hey Connor, feel free to uh, to position anywhere you see fit. Alright. I'd like to bring the order of the city council meeting dated zero nine three zero nineteen eighty-five to order. The uh, meeting will go as normal, um, go around and each, oh. Every councilman will go over, introduce themselves, um, and go over the bills that they uh, they wish to bring up to, to the city council. First, I'd like to announce the, the winner of the election, Boblin, is uh, he won the election. He's currently not here, we'll uh, reach out to him and make sure he knows that he won the remaining seat in the council. Alright, so uh, moving from my right to the left, uh, Councilman Rosetti, mind uh, addressing the floor and presenting any bills you are going to uh, put up for vote this week?
Hi guys, I'm Councilman Rosetti, I've been voting by proxy, been a little busy, but uh, I'm here in the flesh today. Uh, I have a few bills that I'd like to propose to council, and I guess I'll get started with the one that will directly help the most people, uh, the Welfare Adjustment Act of nineteen eighty-five. Uh, simply put, the Welfare Adjustment Act uh, will uh, raise everybody's uh, welfare check to ten dollars or check to keep up with the rising costs and inflation that have been plaguing our economy. I believe that this uh, should, I believe that this should help everybody with uh, with spending power uh, to further help create businesses and help stable livelihoods become a factor once again here in our great city. Now I'll uh, I'll open that up to any, any debate just to me.
Uh, that'll be fine, you can go around, uh, council first and to the people second.
Okay.
Do you have any questions about this bill or act? Take that as a no, um. Does anybody in the audience have any questions about this bill or act? Alright, um. Uh, one second, Mr. Boblin? Mr. Boblin?
Boblin?
Um, you are aware of the results of the election? Well, uh, I guess I'll be the first to congratulate you in saying that you won the uh, special election for the seat of council. Yep, so.
Good job!
Yes, um, there's two open seats.
Good job, Boblin!
Alright, congratulations, um.
Welcome, Boblin!
So does anyone in the, in the audience have any questions about this bill? You can move forward if no questions are. Oh yes, go ahead, let's open the podium. Uh, state your name for the record.
My name is Chaz Riverfox.
Alright, you have the floor, Mr. Riverfox.
Uh, in regards to the uh, welfare increase.
May I speak it up?
Sorry, uh, in regards to the welfare increase bill that's being presented, uh, is there a timeline when it comes to its integration? And second question, given the fact that there has been a massive shift in the local banking systems in regards to transfers from account to account, will there be any um, timeline for that in regards to uh, its reintroduction? Some of the businesses have been having some issues when it comes to getting bonuses paid to employees and for better compensation when it comes to delivery jobs or hours worked, and that's kind of impacting payment and putting a damper on the economy. And I would just like to say that I think that would probably help when it comes to um, people that are doing work for the various businesses to um, you know, combat the uh, rising costs. Because as is, as of this time, uh, payments for employees is kind of limited to when, when managers are available, and that's not feasible for a lot of people depending on their work schedule, so. Those are my two questions and statement, I guess.
Alright, well uh, Chaz, thank you very much uh, for your questions and your statement, and I hear you, and uh, I, 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 I agree with you that, that the payment system and the banking system needs to be uh, fixed. Uh, unfortunately, this bill doesn't deal with that, it just deals with the, with the welfare checks uh, portion. Uh, and as for your first question, when it would be implemented, it's currently set to be uh, implemented uh, immediately after uh, after ratification, uh, and uh, go to the governor setting uh, setting the welfare system in place.
Yeah, there'll have to be judicial review as well with any bill, normal process.
I'd just like the, if there is a timeline for that one, that um, that it would be at the very least um, worked out when that would happen, or at least given a period of time for businesses to uh, potentially adjust for that um, to happen, so that way our finances can be um, you know, aren't, aren't specifically taking uh, a big hit when it comes to that implementation, or at least some idea of when that'll happen, so that way we can plan accordingly. Thank you.
You are heard and your handsome, thank you sir.
Thank you!
Alright, does anyone else have any questions or statements? Alright, go ahead, uh, Councilman.
Hi. Excuse me. Hi, Councilman Billy Falcone. You may remember me from such bills as the Nuclear Empowerment Act and the Emergency Repeal Bill. I'm here. So the question that I have is, you know, will there be, or have you factored in the fact that if the government is giving more people money, then they have less incentive to be in the workforce? And, you know, businesses may not have workers that they need. And also, how are we planning to fund it? You know, I, I, you know, I mean, I had read through it, but I'm still very concerned about the actual funding for it and, and, you know, like, I, I, are you gonna raise taxes on, on, on these fair citizens here? Thank you.
I appreciate it, alright. Council, do you want to respond?
I don't, I don't. Uh, Councilman, uh, I think, I think uh, that leading question wasn't necessary, but no, we do not uh, plan on increasing taxes. I, I don't plan on ever increasing taxes. But, uh, there have been several bills, and there will be several more bills with various uh, implications leading to more money into our system, that should be more than enough to uh, to pay for this small increase to the citizens that are so deserving of uh, of more, of more spending power. And should it make people lazier? I don't believe so, as, as we just heard testimony. Uh, the, the payment system for most businesses is, is in the trash, and a lot of people, even though they are employed, are uh, currently dealing with our system while the, while the uh, employment gets fixed. And I believe that this will uh, incentivize people to even work harder knowing that their money is going uh, going further, or their work is going further towards their money.
Uh, I, I do have a question too, um. His, his, correct me if I'm wrong, but his statement was based on people that are working, that they're getting paid for their managers. Um, was this bill uh, written before the new login jobs that were present? And if you take into account how many job opportunities the citizens do have currently to seek uh, employment? Not including uh, private businesses like restaurants and whatnot?
Um, let's see, when was the logging uh, opened up? I believe this was written, it could have been written in tandem, it was written a while ago, um, which is why I think it's time that we uh, we get it introduced on the floor, especially since I've been able to uh, to make a, an appearance. And uh, I have taken into account everybody's uh, job opportunities, but I also recognize that with those job opportunities comes a union mandate that you can only work so often. Uh, so in the meantime, while you're uh, while you're not technically employed there, you're still collecting uh, unemployment.
Uh, Council, correct me if I'm wrong, wasn't that unionized restriction lifted? And reduced?
I, I don't know. Hey Bobby.
Uh, I think that the elder gentleman, two seats left of me, has a question.
Uh, it's not specifically what the mayor was just asking there, but uh, I could, I could go after this slide of question.
Okay. I, I believe that it was uh, I don't think it was fully lifted, I do believe that it was lowered. But, it's still uh, it's still a restriction nonetheless, and I believe that this bill will help people uh, will help people uh, increase their spending power and further the economy.
What steps have you taken to factor in inflation and, and what inflation could be caused? By infusing more money into the economy like this? Oh yeah.
Well, it's not a one-to-one correlation, uh. Raising, raising the, the welfare check helps the people with their spending power, but that doesn't mean that there's going to be uh, a prolific period of inflation. Some places may raise their prices temporarily, but I, I don't believe that there's going to be large swaths of uh, of inflation. And if you want to go off of what we already have, I do recall at some point seeing that a crowbar cost two hundred seventy-five dollars.
No, it's ninety dollars!
Okay, ninety dollars, so somebody, it, it got lowered back down, which is good, but it's still ninety dollars.
If I may interject on the topic of inflation, I mean, we did just have a gentleman speaking about wanting a heads up on the implementation of the higher welfare, so that businesses could adjust their prices accordingly, I mean, that sounds to me like a clear signal that prices will go up. I mean, we just came out of the seventies, not too long ago, and we've been facing rampant inflation up until
We were almost hyperinflated.
Exactly, we were almost fourteen percent just five years ago, and uh, it's only been through, you know, a lot of work on the federal government's side to curtail this. And now we're just gonna be injecting more cash into the pockets of people who frankly are not working for it. I mean, there's plenty of jobs available, there's jobs here at City Hall, there's jobs at the Pillbox, LSPD, I mean, those are just the the ones that immediately come to mind, there's other businesses where they have employment. People shouldn't just be paid for existing.
Well, uh, Councilman, I don't believe that uh, it is kind of insulting to say they're not working, it's uh, it's, it's, they are the temporary jobs that everybody uses, but it, I, as I said, it's not a contracted job. All these logging, construction, everything, that's all just a contracted union job that you're restricted in your time that you can make, and while you're there, you're still technically unemployed. You need to get money from somewhere, and the money, by the way, is not being injected into the system, it's just sitting there waiting to be, it's, it's already in the system. Everybody's holding on to it, and I don't know why we can't just release it to the deserving people of Los Santos.
I concur, and I think that if it's not possible to ban inflation, then we should allow the people to have more money, because more money means they get to eat more food, and more food means harder work.
I don't think the money is in the system. I, I think basically we were gonna, we're gonna have to print more money, which quantitative easing does not work, it causes, it's what causes inflation.
Uh, yeah, Councilmember, uh, Councilmember, uh, Connor, you had your hand raised.
Um, so, I do believe in assisting people who truly need it when it comes to welfare. Uh, and I do agree on several points of there are jobs available, readily available throughout the city that most people can do. Um, and also private businesses that do pay rather well. When I, when I think of, you know, making my money, this is just for a personal standpoint, you know, fundamentally understanding money, is, I look at how much I'm making in a month, right? So, let's take um, let's take Burger Shot, which is under new ownership under Jason. Um, he just told me he lowered his prices, and if, let's see here, I think I pulled a bulletin flyer off. Alright, here we go, and uh, correct me if these prices are wrong, Jason. Let's say you get a burger, double shot, it's six bucks, right?
Correct.
And uh, that is, you know, a day of payoff of welfare. So, you are already in the negative if you aren't able to work, like truly unable to work. And if I'm working a job where I get paid thirty, fifty, you know, sixty dollars a day, I'm able to eat a little bit more and I'm able to have a better life of living, you know? But if we are, as a city, not able to let our citizens eat, and while I do agree it may cause inflation, there is no true control over how inflation, you know? If, if we can't allow our citizens who are unable to work and actually get welfare, because that's truly what welfare is intended for, is for people who cannot work. I understand some of the people may get it. Uh, if they can't afford to eat or live, then we are failing our citizens. Um, and I, I agree on the points for and against this, I do wanna say, but it's just how I understand uh, this, so.
Hey, and if I, if I may.
Uh, I'll let uh, Councilman Rosetti finish his last.
I would just like to say, uh, that was very well stated by Councilman Fitzgerald. And uh, every year, we have uh, inflation rising and no, no rise in the, in the minimum wage, so it's effectively a cut of their benefits. And uh, I think it's just time that we uh, we bring their benefits up to par. So that the poorest and the neediest can actually be fed, and we can call ourselves a civilization.
Councilman Rogers?
Okay, thank you, um. Uh, hello everyone. Uh, so I'm, I'm a bit torn on this bill, um, only because I see, I see pros and cons uh, for both sides. Um, in regards to the contractor jobs, um, in which, you know, foremen um, make available for us. Um, we, the city did reduce uh, the time uh, between jobs, and they also allowed the jobs to run concurrently, so, for example, if you wish to do construction, window washing and then lumber, you can do them one after the other without, without any penalty of time. Um, I spend uh, probably far too much time uh, doing all three jobs back to back to back uh, throughout the week, and I've calculated that I can make twelve hundred to fifteen hundred dollars an hour. Um, by the time I'm done with lumber, I can go back and do another construction job and start the wheel all over again. I once made twelve thousand dollars in one day. Um, by spending my entire day going from all three jobs and, you know, putting, putting my hands and my back to work to, you know, do construction and lumber and window washing for the city, right? I always believe in spending one day a week, uh, giving back to the city with my own uh, with my own personal labor, right? Um, I, I try and tell new arrivals um, about this when they come off the plane and they come to P D O, right? Um, I let them know that there's opportunity out there very swiftly, where you can get paid a fair wage um, doing manual labor. Um, now in regards to, you know, the, the minimum wage increase, um, I feel like, you know, as we talk about citizens who are not capable of working on this, you know, day of labor or, you know, perhaps they have physical uh, impairments, um, they might be paralyzed, or they might have psychological situations which prevent them from holding a steady job. I feel like, you know, perhaps finding a way to increase the minimum wage for those type of people, pending a physical or a psychological evaluation from our experts at Pillbox, um, then those, those people can qualify, if that makes sense, right? Um, but I do feel like, in, in this current moment, the opportunity to make uh, money very swiftly has increased over the last two months. Um, and, you know, i- i- the opportunity is there, if that makes sense. So I, I, I do see pros and cons. I, I, I don't feel like the wage increase would dramatically increase inflation within the city. I think that would only happen if business owners would feel the need to um, be greedy and, and increase the prices of their, of their items, right? Um, as I stated before, I'm the new owner of Burger Shot, I decreased all the prices from nine and eight dollars down to six and five. Um, specifically thinking about the citizens of Los Santos, because I don't want them to make a decision between putting gas in their car or being able to have lunch, right? So, you know, I, when I, when I bought that business, I, I took that in mind. Um, I don't plan on allowing inflation to affect my business. Um, and that was all, thank you, I yield.
Alright, um. We're gonna cut the comments a little short here, the debate, but uh, Boblin, uh, you have the floor?
Oh, I just wanted to uh, say that I agree with Councilman Fitzgerald and Councilman Rosetti, and that there are various freelance opportunities available throughout this fine city. However, it could be more difficult to find a long-term employment that is consistent and is capable of allowing you to put turkey on your table on a daily basis. Therefore, I think that a slight raise might be a good idea, and perhaps we could take some of this welfare away from individuals that do have lucrative jobs and distribute it back to those who need it most.
Alright. Um, in the uh, in the interest of moving this along, correct, because you have multiple bills? Um, if anymore, if there's no questions further on the floor, I would like to, if the council members feel like this, they can vote, alright, go ahead.
Hi, is it open for any kind of question or?
Uh, question pertaining to the bill at hand.
Oh, okay, um, I was just wondering, is it gonna affect, like, is it only the welfare going up? Or is this gonna push business owners to put wages for other things up, or is it only welfare?
It would uh, it would only be welfare.
Okay, thank you, that was all.
Thank you for your question.
Alright, sir.
Yo.
Are you okay?
Using my, yes, sorry, using my inside. Can y'all hear me now? Um.
That's your, your voice.
So it seems like, there we go. So, um, as it was, as I hear it, it seems like one of the biggest issues is that you know, yes, you can go get the temporary, you know, union jobs, but long-term employment, but does your bill uh, do to address uh, that issue and help uh, our citizens who are currently living off of welfare? Um, correct and find uh, long-term gainful employment that will lead them to not needing to live off of this welfare and live a thriving and fulfilling life?
Um, I agree that there should be a bill for that, and that will uh, possibly be coming up in uh, next, in, in next uh, bills. But this bill is simply just a, a raise in the welfare to get them started back on their feet. But I thank you for your question.
I. I can I get a definition of what lucrative job means?
Say again, I can barely hear you, ma'am.
Uh, what does lucrative job mean?
Uh, who, who used that term, because I, I didn't, uh, it's not stated in the bill.
Well, I mean lucrative could be subjective, but I'll go ahead and say that any lucrative job would be something considered, it's a pretty steady paycheck above welfare, let's say. Um, I would imagine some of the lower paying jobs at City Hall, while it's not being completely lucrative to some, to someone just making five dollars to be bumped up to twenty dollars, in their eyes would probably be considered lucrative, obviously there's different ranges, City Hall is always hiring, but um, that's the lowest I've heard of jobs at city count, at City Hall. Um, I'm sure there's jobs that are upwards of, you know, fifty, heck, I would have even imagined even seventy dollars a, a pay period, so.
No, I just wanted a definition on that.
Yeah.
Sorry, uh.
Are you okay, ma'am?
Nah, I just slipped.
Jesus!
Okay.
You have value when you matter.
Hello? Uh, yes, so, Charles and Tom, this is Angelo, LSPD, I just have one simple question, hello son. Uh, did my son win the election, and is that just why he is sitting at the council seat today?
That is correct.
Hey, son, I'm so happy for you!
Got him! Thank you, father, love you!
I'm so proud, step one complete, I'm uh, I can't wait to see step two through seven.
Seven more steps.
Alright, you guys have a good one.
You too.
Wow, Angelo, we should make you a detective, that was good.
Thanks, thanks. Ah, excuse me, excuse me.
I arrived a bit late, but uh, on the potential raise.
Sorry, I, I arrived a little bit late, so on the potential raise of welfare, uh, how much exactly would it be increased by?
Uh, it would be increased from five to ten dollars.
Okay, I just heard the mayor say something about five to twenty increment, and I was just unaware if that was what it was jumping to, but alright.
Yeah, I was just stating what a lucrative job, someone that had a five dollar welfare check and then got hired and was paid twenty, that would be, I would think they might think that is lucrative.
Sure, okay, yeah, that was it, just wanted clarification on what it's bumping up to potentially, so thank you.
Alright, no problem, I appreciate you. Alright, if we have any more questions? No, um, there's no more questions, go ahead.
Um, Councilman Rosetti, is there room to compromise? Um, so instead of increasing to ten, perhaps increase to seven?
Um, I mean, there is, and anybody, like, anybody is free to uh, add an amendment to this bill. Uh, if you, if you have an amendment to change the, the number, then you, I feel free to uh, start a motion to table this, this bill for, for an amendment, we can discuss next week.
Um, let's just do, well, I was gonna put the vote, but I guess we could do that first if anyone wants to table for amendment or just vote on it, actually, I hear every council member's opinion, do you wanna table this or vote on this now?
Could we vote on an amendment to seven?
Um, yeah, I guess, I guess we could if you could type it up after, eh.
You wanna vote to amend it to seven and then vote on it after?
I am, I'm in agreement with that.
Alright. So, um, let's do a vote to amendment then, we'll go right to left, so. Rosetti, you can go, uh, you can go first. I'm um, sorry ma'am, I'm, we're gonna vote on it, um.
Vote on the amendment?
Yeah, vote to amend first.
I vote, I vote aye.
Alright, Billy?
Nay.
Boblin?
Nay, for the people.
Uh, Jason?
Uh, yay.
Alright, Kudo?
Nay.
Alright, so I have three nay, two yay, you uh, Mr. Fitzgerald?
Yay.
Yay.
So three and three, I, I vote nay on that, so. The vote to amend is failed. We can move to vote on the bill.
Aye.
One aye, Billy?
Nay.
Boblin?
Yay!
Uh, Winters? All right, so three to one so far. Who's?
Nay.
Connor?
Yay.
All right, I vote nay, so. What is that? Is that? Shouldn't be, I can't, I can't be the one pulling the vote and keep the track, um. All yays, so just raise your hand like a right down the vote here.
Yay!
So four yays and three na, um, five, so five to four, the vote fails then. To let the record show, the, uh, the Amendment Act, um, or raise of welfare has failed at a five to four margin. All right, moving forward. Uh, you said you had more bills there, Rosetti?
Uh, just one more. I don't know, I'll do it for today. Uh, I'd like to introduce the Business Promotion Act of nineteen eighty-five. Uh, it's a bill to enable people who own businesses that are not already on the map, such as restaurants or, uh, pawn shops or things like that, uh, to, to get their bill on, on the map, or get their business on the map for a, uh, for a fee that will go to the, uh, to the government to help with other, uh, other bills, uh, like the one that just fell sadly. Um, essentially, essentially, uh, everybody, when you arrive at the, arrive at the airport, train station, wake up, however you get to this illustrious city, you all find yourselves with a, uh, with a welcome to Los Santos map. And there are several businesses that are currently on that map that, uh, I have noticed through my personal anecdote and through surveying of others that a business on that map is more likely to get customers than a business that is not. Even with advertising, uh, such as the, uh, the post office boards. Uh, I've even been told by several people that they just don't even check those post office boards. So sometimes the advertising is, is for nothing. I, I propose that for a fee, uh, filed and approved through the business revenue division, uh, of two thousand dollars and, and having your business have been in operation for three months or longer, then you could get a, a marker on the map of your business so that you can attract more customers.
Before we move forward with this, I have a quick question, uh, regarding our last vote. Uh, are we including Grant McMillan's proxy vote on that matter?
Um, my personal opinion, well, I don't need to open the table too much about this. I, I'm not too keen on proxy votes. I feel like the council members need to be here, understand we had been keeping track of proxy votes. But, um, if, if we did, what would the vote be? What would his vote be?
Yeah, it's, uh, voting for.
It'd be five, five? All right, well, then I would break that tie and I would say still the vote I think that, so.
Gotcha, yeah, I just wanted to make sure it was noted in the record, that's all.
Oh, no, I appreciate that, um.
I think there's seven of us?
It's in, on the, on the.
Good question, son. You do math.
The mayor holds, the mayor holds additional votes as his.
Yeah, I hold additional votes. I hold three votes and then I hold the power to break the tie.
Shall he be emperor?
Uh, I don't believe the council should state that I'm emperor. Um, so, yeah, I, and that was my own, like, proxy votes, I think were good to be standing when there was only a few of us that could make the meetings, but in all actuality, I think for the people, we should be here. Um, but in that case of that proxy, um, it would be five, five, and I would break that vote. I broke the, break the tie and I would vote nay on that bill, so. We can let the record show that, um, that is fine. If moving forward to the next meetings, we, uh, should be here in present making our votes and presenting our bills.
I, uh, I'd like to make this, make a statement, uh, when you're finished with it.
Um, I, I'm finished, that's fine. I don't need to drag this on. Go ahead.
I just think that, uh, we should keep the proxy vote system, cause, just cause you're here now doesn't mean you can always be here. And, uh, everybody's vote should matter, cause we all did get elected by the people.
Yes, I, I agree. There is stipulations on absences and all of that. I just think
Aye.
to vote and to be absent by, to vote by proxy continuously, um, I don't think it shows that the people that were here and, and as I've already submitted to the council, um, a calendar to figure out the best times for everyone to be here. We're trying to figure out best ways to go about it. But I just feel like proxies allow for what happened in the first city council, which is why we're all here. It's because city council was doing everything by proxy and if proxy at best, so. But to move this meeting along, definitely move to the next, uh, bill.
Yeah, I introduced it. Uh, does anybody have any, any questions on the Business Promotion Act?
All right, uh, we'll go council members first and then you guys can line up at the podium. Go ahead, uh, Falco?
Excuse me, so in light of the, the recent announcement by the government that, you know, that, that kind of personally started businesses aren't gonna have that level of support unless I misunderstood it. Um, doesn't that kind of negate the purpose of this bill? I mean, I, I like, I like the bill. I, I, I would vote, vote for it, but I, I, I think that the, that the, the governor's office's recently, recent announcement may negate this bill.
Yeah, I, I, uh, I, I do, I see what you're saying and I share it as a concern, but I believe that if we pass this bill, then, uh, we could, we could use this leverage to convince the governor that this is something that the people want and it would help, uh, keep the economy thriving as, uh, struggling businesses, uh, would possibly struggle less. So I, I think it's a good chip to show to, to the governor if passed.
All right, any, uh, any other questions or council, Mr. Pudo?
Uh, I think my only concern is the, uh, the fee, two thousand dollars seems a little high. Uh, some businesses aren't exactly swimming in profits to be able to reach that, uh, to breach that marker. Maybe look at like a thousand dollars. Otherwise, it's fine. I like it.
All right, councilor, it's all right, Connor?
I am unable to find a copy of this on my desk. Could you, one of you pass me a copy of that so I can take a look at it just real quick?
I, I also don't know what's going on. If I could get a copy as well.
I, I can slide it to you, uh, Connery and Boblin.
Thank you, sir. I appreciate you.
While that's happening, I do have a question. Did it, it, all during this bill, did you, um, consult the, the bureau? About how, what viewpoints they had?
Uh, no, I had, I'd had a chance to consult with them, uh, given, given various, various complications.
Um, while the two council members read the bill, uh, we can move to the floor and have them ask their questions.
You're reading?
All right.
Let's hear it, go guys.
Okay, let me get my outdoor voice on. It's Ken Royal and Sicard, Public Defense. Um, not, one of my issues with this bill is currently, a- as it states, two thousand dollar fee. Um, what is the idea about getting these fees from these businesses that have already benefited from this? And doesn't it create an unfair, um, burden on these new businesses to have to pay a fee to be put on the map that the current businesses did not have to pay?
Um, that's a fair question, Island, and I, and it, it really does. It, it sells to me why this bill is necessary. Uh, because without this bill, what do we have now? Some businesses are there for free, some businesses will never be there. With this bill, those businesses that would never be there have an opportunity to be there on the map and get more business. Um, as for retroactive from people that are already on the, on the, uh, map, I don't think that that is, uh, is necessary and it's not included on the, uh, on the bill. It's, uh, I guess luck of the draw.
But shouldn't we give a grace period where for these people to apply for free, have the same advantage? Now, stay, once it passed, they have excellent time to apply and have their business added to the map at no charge. And then after that date, then it, the charge is implemented.
Sounds like I gotta make some money now.
Um.
Yep.
Uh, the biggest thing with, uh, with the fee is that it would help us as a government, uh, control, oh, not control, go, uh, control the, uh, money flow for other practices. Unfortunately, one of those failed today, but I could consider, I did consider the, uh, the possibility of having businesses sign up for free, but I don't. Uh, in the end, I decided against it for, uh, for reasons that, that it would just be a logistical nightmare.
Mm-hmm. Like I said, perhaps it's just a grace period rather than, you know, outright being free. Give them a, um, two-month grace period, a month grace period after the bill, there they can submit after that, then they're, and they have to pay for the fee.
Um, Mr., uh, Councilman Fitzgerald, do you have a answer?
Um, I, I, sorry, this is just a quick question. Um, I'm sorry to interrupt you there, sir. What is the current fee for, um, business application?
Six hundred dollars.
Thank you, that's all I need. I will, I'll make comments later.
Gentlemen?
All right, thank you.
Aye.
What's that, your name?
Hi, my name is, uh, Henry Johnson, business owner of Shell dot P I. Uh, I just have, uh, two quick questions, if that'd be okay, uh, pertaining to why specifically two thousand dollars? Why not a different amount? And second question would be, would this be a reoccurring fee associated with our business license every time we need to renew it? Or is this a one-time fee to have it on the map and we don't have to pay it again?
So, uh, why two thousand is, uh, is my illustrious friend, the council member over there said, um, some businesses aren't swimming in money, okay? I think two grand is, uh, is a respectable amount to earn in, in, cause the other stipulation is that your business has to be in operation for three months or longer to, to ensure that it's an established business. Um, I think in three months, you can easily make two thousand dollars, uh, for, for this fee. Any higher would probably be running, uh, running a, uh, a danger of nobody being able to afford this except the ultra wealthy. And, uh, any lower, I think we would, uh, it would be too, too, uh, too low. Anybody could set up an O L C and get a, uh, get a, uh, comp, get a marker, in my opinion. And then for your second question, I believe, uh, as written, it is a one-time fee. But obviously, if your, uh, if your business, uh, runs afoul of, of the current laws and legislature regarding the business revenue division, um, then, uh, uh, you would lose this, you would lose this, uh, privilege as well.
All right, that pretty much answers my question. Thank you all for your time.
Thank you for your, uh, interest in comments. What's your name?
Sorry, Ashley Williams, Director, Business Revenue Bureau. Oh, God, Boblin. So my question really comes down to, uh, the one-time fee of, uh, two thousand is, yeah, wha- whatever price you choose, uh, but it's the, uh, we want in the, uh, the wording that they have to be in good standing for three months with the, uh, the bureau. Um, we do have a lot of businesses that have been here for a while, um, and they have been under mismanagement. Uh, I don't wanna air anybody's dirty laundry, but yeah, there, there, there have been businesses that have not been in good standing and haven't been acting in good faith for the citizens of Los Santos. Um, and if they were to apply for something like this without any stipulation of them being in good standing with our bureau, um, that seems like we are allowing bad behavior to be kind of, uh,
Case of the cattle calling. This is.
Ashley, thank you very much for your question. Uh, I would like to say that that is in the stipulations and I'll read the stipulations here, uh, so everything's on the. So owners listed on the license for a business may apply to put their business on the wealth in the Los Santos map provided the bus, A, the business is in good standing with the Business Revenue Bureau and B, the business has been in operation for three months or longer.
And then, uh, what is the, uh, ability, how agile do you think the government would be for, like, let's say, removing that for a business that becomes defunct? The last thing we want is to direct our new citizens to a business that no longer exists.
That's, that is a, uh, a fair, fair question. And I believe that with something like this, they, uh, they could be persuaded to be, uh, pretty agile with it. But I also would like to say, um, not too quickly. I think some leniency with that would be good. Uh, especially, it's not like the second you, you're out of, uh, out of line, you get your thing cut. But I, I do believe that we could get the, the markers removed from the maps.
That's all my questions. Thank you, Councilman.
I have a question for you.
Sorry.
I have a question for Ashley.
Oh, Mr. Ashley, you mind stepping back to the podium?
Yes, sir.
Hey, just, just wanted a couple, uh, questions here, just because you are the director. Um, so it's six hundred dollars for the application fee, correct?
Uh, yes, I believe that is correct.
And, and is there a, uh, amount of operation time a business needs to have, like, started or do they need to apply before they start?
Uh, we're usually fairly lenient on, uh, I don't see how this pertains to this bill, actually, sir.
Uh, it's, it's, it's for a possible amendment, uh, to the bill that I'm looking at for future. Uh, basically, if, if a business is starting up, you, instead of doing two different application fees, uh, when a business signs up, they have the ability to work towards that as their progress continues with you. Um, but it's just a possible amendment for the future. That's why I'm just.
I mean, that would be after two successful applications, assuming the applications last six weeks and they are good standing. After the second application, that would be that three-month, uh, limit that Councilman Rosetti, uh, was bringing up. So, yeah, it'd be basically two back-to-back, um, successful applications.
Thank you so much. I appreciate it.
Yeah.
All right. Councilmember, uh, what's your? Boblin, sorry?
Oh, sorry. My, I have two questions about this bill for Councilman Rosetti.
Okay.
If, if an individual applies to have their, uh, business added to the map and they are rejected, will they have the six hundred dollar fee refunded or is it gone to the governmental bankery system?
It is, uh, non-refundable.
Second question. If a business is found to be engaged in criminal activity, will they have their marker revoked?
Um, I believe, uh, the, the current stipulations have guidance on that, if I, if I'm not mistaken.
Uh, and what do you mean by the current guidance? The current constitution?
Uh, yeah, I believe I, I read that all, all the Business Revenue, uh, Bureau, I believe I read somewhere that cr- known criminal activity, uh, is, is a loss of privileges. If, if not, uh, and I, and I misremember, then that is not currently written into the bill, no.
I believe, um, and again, if Mr. Williams wants to correct me if I'm wrong, the, uh, the business is subject to be, uh, the, the business license is subject to be revoked and all of their possessions within said business can be seized and sold. But because this is an amendment, that condition is explicitly not mentioned because currently there is no, um, business that would be pulled. And that I believe that stipulation is not written explicitly in the constitution currently, is my point.
Okay, so then uh currently as written, no, it would not. Dissolve the most.
Which actually begs the question because there's there's the there's the brick and mortar business, correct, and then there's the service based in business that may. Um, not have a brick and mortar home, I know them, there is movement to require that. Um, I think there is some area where this would not affect, not be in effect, so maybe we need to think about. Uh, based on all the questions and even the one that I concern I have, maybe we should vote on ratification and tabling this and then discussing those. In in detail, explicit language. Um. At least that's my opinion, um go ahead.
Move to uh to table this discussion and ratify the.
Alright, do you have anyone's second admission?
Second?
Yes.
Checking Gary.
Uh. Motion to.
Well, uh.
Uh, debate and ratification passed, um. Councilmember Rosetti, um, we're gonna table this, I recommend um getting with the Business and Revenue Bureau and fellow councilmembers to. Uh and taking into account what the the citizenry have said, uh to ratify this for a vote next week.
Alright.
It's also a title.
Alright. Um, moving forward, uh do you have any more bills to present to the table?
Uh, no, I am uh I am finished.
Alright, uh.
I'm gonna go to that.
Yes, um as some of you may be aware, the um. Um, the Chief Justice uh shot down the um. The the bill that this council passed, the San Andreas Sensual Speed Act, um, the. The, in in my view, the the purpose of judicial review is to ensure that the constitutional rights of citizens is not. Uh impinged on by the passing of bills and um the. Review that the. Chief Justice conducted was not with within his aligned powers. Um, you know, I I've submitted a request for redress to him and um and should it not. Um, you know. Should it not succeed, uh I'll be bringing a motion to create a Supreme Court to oversee uh Chief Justice's uh decisions. At a future meeting.
Okay, appreciate your comments and statements, um Boblin, do you have uh, you probably don't have any bills to present, but do you have any statements for the floor?
Uh, I love the people and I love my fellow council members, thank you.
Alright. Mr. Winters, do you have any um bills or statements for the floor?
Uh, yes, I have a uh amendment I'd like to bring to the floor.
Alright, go ahead.
Uh, thank you, um, I have the uh Term Limit Amendment Act of nineteen eighty-five. Uh currently in our constitution, uh sitting council members, the mayor and the chief justice are elected for sixty day terms. I would like to increase that to ninety days, uh the reason why is because um I believe a quarterly uh seating uh makes more logistical sense. Um, it also will prevent uh voter burnout from trying to fill uh multiple vacant seats. Uh due to citizens either uh dropping out um due to other uh activities or deciding to leave the city uh midterm. Uh this will bring consistency and stability uh to the to the council as well as um the elected mayor and the chief justice's office. Um and allow, you know, all three parties um to essentially just be 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 in consistency in communication with each other, if that makes sense. Um, so from a statistics and logistical point, I feel like uh I feel I feel like that would just make more sense for uh for all parties.
Alright, any uh anyone from the council, any comments?
Monday, one second. I I apologize, I ninety days for council, a hundred and twenty days for mayor and a hundred and twenty days for chief justice, I uh I dropped my paperwork as I was reading it, my my apologies.
It's okay, it's okay. It's alright. Did you say you had uh, you were thinking about something, Mr. Caputo?
Uh, yeah, I'm having a bit of a brain fog, what is the current term for chief justice?
Uh, the current term for chief justice, I believe, is sixty days, I have to, I can, I can, let me uh give a second to shuffle my paperwork and pull up the constitution again.
Um, while uh I could take, try and take a look, while we do that, we could move to any questions from uh anyone in your stance. The audience want to uh make comments on this uh bill while we look through the constitution?
Yeah, I'd say it's sixty days.
You can go first. Uh, so what are the current term limits, uh I I'm unaware of current, the current term limits for. Council members and and how many terms that they are able to run for?
The current term limits for council members is sixty days, um the current term limit for the mayor is sixty days and the current term limit for the uh chief justice is sixty days. I like to increase the the term limits for council, councilmen to ninety days and the mayor and chief justice to a hundred and twenty.
So it would be the term period, not the limit, so you're not limiting how many times they can run, correct?
I can repeat that, I I apologize.
Yeah, so you're not limiting how many, so it's term period, not limits, so you're not limiting how many times uh it can run?
It's a it's a term period, yes.
Yeah, okay.
Period, yeah, um I believe we're only allowed to have one reelection cycle.
And. Okay, cool, yeah, that that's one thing I wasn't aware of, and also, is there anything being done to address staggering the elections so that we're not cycling and like. Our entire government all in one go and we so we can have some stability of government?
Uh, current, go ahead, I I.
No, go ahead, go ahead, go ahead, Mr. Mary.
Um, currently, it is staggered, so you have four seats open at one time and then the second four seat is open later. Um, one of the good things about Mr. Winter's bill is it would span that period longer, but the staggering of the elections would still be in place.
Nope, I would speak in favor of that initiative and hopefully we can, you know, get a little bit longer term limits and not be, you know, going. So I believe that will lead to a sta- more stable and productive government.
Appreciate your comments, thank you very much. Anyone else, uh?
He he answered my question.
So, so to the podium, if you have a question?
He said it was answered by the. By the last answer.
Okay, appreciate it, just hear that, alright, um.
Yeah, I'm mostly good with everything on here, except for the Article Three dealing with the chief justice, chief justice is somewhat of a unique position in that it's only. Uh, s- s- a small group of people, uh judges or myself or the chief of public defense. Cycling that out on a shorter scale kind of leads to a little more flexibility in terms of who is sitting in that position. Having that drawn out and extended for an extended period of time is a lot to ask of of a single individual, when there's only so many people that can fill that seat.
I I understand, absolutely.
Do you wanna try to amend that or table it and amend it later?
If we, if we're, the men will amend that, the alliteration, everyone knows it, um, yeah, I'd say everything else is good, with the exception of that one, I'd say that was just staying back. So I'd I'd say amend or remove Article Three.
Would you like to uh? And then vote, are you saying amend, you you want to amend it, change it, or do you want to remove it, either way, do you still wanna vote on it?
Hmm, yes.
Okay. So are you proposing that it be amended back to sixty or taken out, or you mean taken out and just hold the same value that it holds in the House?
Yeah, I believe that's the only change, and Article Three is changing it from sixty to a hundred.
Nah.
Alright, does anyone, um, are you okay, first off, since you wrote the bill, Mr. Winters, are you okay with that?
Uh, absolutely, if the if the council agrees to amend it uh back, I I will support it.
Alright, uh anyone motion, anyone second to motion, to move it up the board?
I second.
Alright, motion's passed, so now we can vote on the bill that has the stricken section three.
It's just listening?
Does the council feel like they're willing to vote on the bill?
Hmm, do you have any water?
Yeah.
Aye aye, captain.
Alright, haha, sorry, I didn't call for a vote, but, uh, alright, so. Right, all in all, uh, all in favor of the passes of Mr. Winter, Mr. Winters' uh bill to extend uh the time. That we send the council and the mayor's office, please raise your hand.
Aye.
We're just, we're raising our hands if we're anything, right?
Yeah, sorry, yeah, raise it.
Okay.
Alright, so we have a, I I vote yes, so we have a, eh, we have a unanimous decision, well, it, Billy, you, did you raise your hand?
Yeah.
Okay, so unanimously, the bill is passed, um, congratulations, Winters, on getting your first bill to the table and passed.
Thank you, sir, I uh I amended the uh the bill um for Mr. Caputo's uh feedback.
Alright, so let the record show, the bill for the term limit extensions are, I forget the exact verbiage, has passed, um. Moving on, do you have any more bills you wanna present to the council?
Uh, no, sir.
Alright, uh moving to Mr. Caputo, do you have any bills or statements you'd like to to bring up?
Nope, uh, I'd just like to welcome Mr. Boblin to the council, uh well, ours.
Oh, thank you so much, sweet prince, I really appreciate that, I'm so happy to have you as a colleague.
Um. Mr. Fritz, do you have a uh? Uh, do you have any comments?
Uh, no, not this time, just welcome to the council, Boblin, and I do apologize for my absence, um I will probably be here for the rest of my. Well, it's going to be my end of my term, um while I make the decision if I'm going to vacate or not.
Again, appreciate you being here, I know um.
I I have made, I have made uh Saturdays completely available to the city, so I have adjusted my tight schedules for that.
And I would say welcome back as well, Mr. Winters.
Thank you.
Alright, um, I I don't really have any statements or bills to to uh really bring up, except for the fact that I'm glad to see so many seats filled. In the uh, the city council, when I took over as mayor, I think we had three sitting council members that were active. Um, I'm glad to see everyone here, so, and uh congratulations, Boblin, congratulations, Winters. Um, for the addition to the council, uh with that, I would like to open up the floor to the citizens of this great city, um to open up. Any kind of questions you had or if we missed a question or a statement you wish to make, you, this is your time, so please line up at the podium and uh state your name when you're to the microphone.
Got up too early.
Alright, so, all no further questions?
It's a first.
Yeah.
Yeah, what the?
No further questions, no further statements. Uh, city council meeting is adjourned.
Holy shit, he can stop rain!
I need to bring snacks to this.
What the?
Look, look what we did.
Stopped raining when he.
Excuse the glasses, you can't read this.
Yeah, I was going to carry.
Also, I figured it'd make me look super professional.
Yeah, I mean, yeah, if you got time, I know you're probably tired.
Ah, yeah, in my head, it's about.
I don't know, this is the star right now. They wide rounded square frames in a kind of, you know, beigeish color.
Yeah, I mean, if there's anything new to talk about, I don't know if this, is there?
Yeah, I have the.
I don't know, I'm talking about like women's glasses.
The tenancy contract, so let you take a moment to just review over that and just update.
Sure, I'm just one of the, congratulate Boblin, real quick.
Yeah, go for it.
Okay, um, it was across from that one clothing store, if I remember right.
Yeah, yeah.
Boblin!